Okay, good evening, everybody. Let's call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. We had some prelude music tonight. Thank you. I've got Jamie Rector in here. Jamie? Thank you very much.[34.22][34.22](APPLAUSE). Let's open the meeting as we always do with an invocation tonight by Pastor William Wrench of Calvary Baptist Church. Pastor Wrench? Pastor Wrench decided not to come tonight. Tell you what, Mr. Adams, would you do us the privilege? And after that, would you remain standing, please, for the flag salute? That'll be led tonight by Councilmember Matt Ron.
Please bow your heads. Dear me, Father, Lord, I just thank you for this evening. I just pray that you would continue to have your hand on the city of Temecula, the decisions that are made here. I pray for wisdom, discernment for the city council, for the city staff. Lord, just continue to watch over us in all that we do and say, and we give thanks to you each and every day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, join me in the flag salute. Place your hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We've got a few presentations and proclamations this evening, but before we get to that, I'd like to talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing next week on Monday, starting at 5:00 here. As many of you know, we have an empty chair up here, and we'll be filling that vacancy. And the beginning of that process is to interview the 23 candidates who have applied to be appointed to that position. So those interviews will take place here in public session on Monday, starting at 5:00. Each applicant will have five minutes, if they choose to take five minutes, to talk about themselves and their qualifications, after which the city council, at our option, can take some time, give or take another five minutes or so, to ask some questions of the applicants. And it's our hope that we get through all 23 of the applicants in one night. If we don't, then we have reserved and noticed a meeting for the following night, Tuesday, to complete that task. Then we won't be actually appointing anybody at that meeting or those meetings. We'll be listening to everybody and taking it all in, and then at our regular meeting two weeks from tonight, on April 28th, we'll actually be making that appointment. So just wanted to give everybody a heads up, if you have any involvement, if you want to come watch it, or if you happen to be one of the applicants. That's what we're going to be doing. And if you have any questions on that, feel free to contact Randy, our city clerk, sitting down here, and she's leading that process.
It's historic.
Yeah, it's historic? Well, it's not histo-- it is historic. It's not without precedent, but it is historic. So not very often a body gets to do that and determine who'll be sitting in that chair for a year, year and a half, or 20 years, or 30 years. Who knows? So, interesting. Okay, with that, we have a proclamation this evening. You want me to take roll call?
I just want, on the record, I'm here.
Everybody just wants to tell me what to do tonight.
I'm your vice mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Niggar.
Oh, it's always a pleasure.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Mayor Comerchero.
Here. Now?
Yes.
Okay.
You're okay now.
We have a proclamation for the DMV Donate Life California Month. Do we have a recipient with us this evening? Would you come on, come on down?
Hi.
My name's Marie Heita. I'm with Donate Life One Legacy.
And I'm Marie Danker. I'm the office manager for the Temecula--
It's a pair of Marie's.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Are we on?
Yeah, he's getting it. There you go.
Okay. I'd like to read this. But, you know, we joke a little bit and have a good time up here, but when we need to get serious, we know how to do that, too. And I know this is a very serious matter, and we appreciate what you do. This is the City of Temecula proclamation. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts of recognized worldwide and are recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and whereas a single individual's donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need, and whereas more than 21,000 individuals in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting for a transplant due to the shortage of donated organs, and whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, and whereas nearly 12 million Californians have signed up for the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored, and whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, I, Jeff Comerchero, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 to be DMV Donate Life California Month. In witness thereof, I have here to affix my hand and cause the seal of the city of Temecula to be affixed this 14th day of April 2015. So it's my pleasure to make this proclamation. Give it to you.
And with that--
In here.
--in honor of Mr. God of all times-- I did, the gentleman that passed away, I did things. Thank you.
Oh.
Talk about having a blank.
It's all right.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, in honor of Mr. Sweeney, because I did a couple of events with him. This is a Donate Life flag that can go and fly with your American flag if you choose to have an event to show it. This is for you guys.
Thank you. We will use it appropriately.
But that is definitely for Mr. Sweeney. I enjoyed doing the events with him. He was such a gracious man, and--
I got to meet him on several occasions, and I agree--
He was absolutely wonderful, and I was so upset when I read about him. I just wished something could have helped him. But thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the city of Temecula and the 123,000 people who are on the waiting list. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.[501.34][501.34](APPLAUSE).
123,000.
While I'm already here, we have some beauty queens in the house. Why don't you all come on up? I assume that everyone who's wearing a crown is a beauty queen. Fair assumption? Why don't you come up and come right around here?
Oh, I like that one. I've never seen that one before.
And I'm going to read just one of these because I believe they're all essentially the same, only the names are different. So this one happens to be for Kathy Ivins, and it's the City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. Presented on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Temecula, to Kathy Ivins, we proudly commend Kathy for her being crowned Ms. Temecula Elite of Tri Valley Pageants and wish her great success in her future endeavors. So where's Kathy? First one. Congratulations.[564.91][564.91](APPLAUSE). And Chloe Rogers, Ms. Temecula of Tri Valley Pageants. Ms. Temecula, Chloe. Sydney Starling. Sydney is teen Temecula.[591.32][591.32](APPLAUSE). Congratulations. Sarah is junior teen Temecula. Congratulations.[604.29][604.29](APPLAUSE). Regan. There was a president I liked who had that name, you know. Regan is pre-teen Temecula.[615.12][615.12](APPLAUSE). Congratulations. I bet this is you. Shannon. And Shannon is ambassador Temecula.[626.04][626.04](APPLAUSE). Congratulations. And her court. Ladies-- Moving on to public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. And for all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item, and each of those speakers is limited to five minutes. Do we have any public speakers?
We do. Mr. Mayor, we have four. The first speaker is Dylan Thompson, to be followed by Cheryl Eckert.
Hello, my name is Dylan Thompson, and I would just like to be able to have, like, a public discussion about the closing of the Dial Collective. This happened a while ago, but it was a do-it-yourself, all-ages, local venue for artists and musicians, and it was located right on the edge of Murrieta and Temecula, but I think it was actually still in the Temecula area, and it was closed for noise complaints, even though it was in like a storage facility. And I just feel like every time a new, like, do-it-yourself, local artist thing shows up in Temecula, it automatically, like, gets shut down for something trivial, like noise complaints, even though it's not near any suburban housing or anything like that. I just feel like there's some kind of, like, culture war almost in Temecula on just freedom of, like, artistic expression and such for the public. I'm not sure why, like, every time something seems to show up-- there used to be this other one that was called The Vault. It was like a collective. I'm not sure what the specific things were for that, but it was also closed down, and it just, it seems like every time someone's trying to do something just for, like, artistic expression in Temecula, it seems to be shut down for something really trivial. That's really all I had to say, so it's about it, yeah. All right. Bye.[816.12][816.12](APPLAUSE).
I don't know where that is.
Thank you for your input. Mr. City Manager, I think, you know, the council would benefit from just a brief report on why, assuming that was in our jurisdiction and under our control, as to why that was closed. Was something we did? Was it something they did? Was it failure to follow the rules? What--
Sure, we'll follow up, and we'll get the city council floor report.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Cheryl Eckert, to be followed by Lynn Pennock.
Ms. Eckert, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers, city officials. Dr. Don is also with me this evening, and we are part of your local task force for health and family safety, and we are here tonight to let you know that we are putting on a presentation on Tuesday, May 5th. I don't know if that's going to show up or not, but we're very excited about it because we are working with Temecula Valley Council PTA, and together, we're putting this on at the Temecula Valley New Theater at the high school. And it is free, and we are offering two hours of community service to students who attend, and we're hoping to get many parents and teachers and kids who would benefit from this program to come out. And we especially would hope that some of the city officials will come out, and Dr. Don's going to let you know what the program, the panel discussion's actually going to entail.
So real quick, Opal Singleton, the CEO and president of Million Kids, basically, and my wife and myself, will do a dual presentation. At any one time, there are 750,000 sex predators online, based on the FBI data, and these sex predators are getting crafty. They play Minecraft, they play video games, they use Facebook, Twitter, Instagram profiles to basically lure, groom, and entrap our youth. And so we want to communicate why that happens and the neuroscience behind addictions, and if we're too attached to the screen, how we can fall, basically, into Catfish. I mean, the young generation out there understands Catfish, which is an MTV series on a guy who got tricked into falling in love with a beautiful woman who turns out to be a 60-year-old married, you know, woman who did not represent herself properly. But sex predators are doing the same thing now, and so that's what we wanted to communicate so that people are armed and aware to protect our youth and our families in Temecula. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Niggar?
I just wanted to thank you both, not only for your work on the local task force, but continuing the effort, and particularly this effort. Your energy is noted, and I just really appreciate the good work you're doing in the community.
Thank you.
You bet.
We have some flyers. Can we leave them to the clerk?
Just give it to the city clerk. She'll make sure we get them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Lynn Pennock, to be followed by Mark Kaiton.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Pennock.
I have to state my name again. I'm Lynn Pennock. Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council and officials, and I am here as a representative of the Public Affairs Committee for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and I just wanted to put out there that we are hosting an event on April 25th. I have a little flyer right here, and it's called Just Serve.
Can you move it to where the other one was and just move the-- yeah, that's fine, and then it'll show up on screen. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. So--
Can I just move it up a little bit? You can zoom out. There you go.
And it is a day of community service that we're inviting all the community to be a part of, and there are service hours that the youth could get for working, and let me just give you a brief rundown of the projects. And you can go on the website and sign up, and it's projects that will be happening specifically on that day, but the Just Serve website is always doing projects, and you can always sign up and do projects in and around Temecula, and it benefits our wonderful community. So what we're doing on the 25th is, and these projects will occur from 8 to 12, and we are doing some painting and some work at Vale Ranch Park, and at the Temecula Valley Rose Society, at the Murrieta Creek Trail, that's between Butterfields, you know where that's at, at the Kent Hintergarten Memorial Park, and at the Jefferson Recreation Center, the Harveston Community Park, and at Chapparrell High School. And then from the hours of 8:30 to 3:00, we are doing a project that will be divided in shifts, and it's a veterans project, and it's the stories of service, and it's a veteran support project at Harveston Park. So we just want to invite all of you to come out and give some service to our community that day. All right?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to-- well, you can stay there. Just to repeat, the website, if you want to sign up, is JustServe.org, right? So JustServe.org. They do it every year, and it's really a good event, so go out and volunteer. Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, the final speaker is Mark Kaiton.
Mr. Kaiton.
Thank you so much, Mayor Comerchero, councilmembers, staff. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again. Yes, I'm here every two weeks to talk to you about Taste of Temecula Valley, and the other Tuesdays, I'm at the school board talking to them about the Taste of Temecula Valley. So hopefully, we're getting the word out, but it's coming up, and we do have a brief We cut the time, so I would still be able to talk.[1230.21][1230.21](LAUGHING). This year, we're pleased to report that the event will be two days. A Friday premiere event, which will go from 6:00 to 10:00, and then the full taste, which will be from 11:00 to 7:00 on the 25th. Both events are here in front of the beautiful Temecula City Hall, and tickets are available at the Community Theater. So tickets in advance are available there. But patrons are also allowed to purchase tickets at the gate. The TO TV Preview Night Concert features an unique light-the-night audience participation event. It is intended to reflect the bright future for Temecula and its students. MC Timmy Daniels of Timmy D Productions will host both days along with DJ Nate Scott. Friday's performance featured classic rockers Darren Prichard and friends with special guest the Lee Cook Band. Cook is a singer-songwriter and multi-instrumentalist from Temecula made famous by the reality show The Voice, and you can see the artist posted up there. And on Saturday, we will have the full-day event from 11:00 to 7:00, which includes 80 vendors, assorted foods, assorted crafts, and pachanga. Pachanga is back this year in a big way, and you'll see what I mean by big when you come to the event. So it's an amazing thing that they've got planned for us, but especially the kids' zones. We've featured the kids' zone and doubled the size of kids' zones, so we'll have something for all ages available at the event. The train, the petting zoo, everything possible, every slide and everything, the Jolly Jump Zone will be here. And, oh, live performances all day Saturday, and our headliner for Saturday is Gary Seiler and the Coast Riders. They're a Jimmy Buffett tribute band, and the Coast Riders were wildly popular at the TO TV 2013, and we're happy to have them back this year. TO TV is sponsored by the Temecula Education Foundation, which raises money for the local schools. So if you come, the money's going back to the schools. It's going to help your kids and help your teachers. So we hope to see you at the Temecula Valley. Taste of Temecula Valley.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to see you here.[1381.83][1381.83](APPLAUSE). Was that the last of the speakers, Madam Clerk?
It was, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Then at this point, we'll hear city council reports. Reports by members of the city council on matters not on the agenda will be made at this time. Total not to exceed 10 minutes will be devoted to these reports. Is there anybody who would like to say anything? Okay, that takes care of the 10 minutes. That was quick. Thank you. At this point, we'll look to approve the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item one, waiving of the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item two, approve the action minutes of March 24th, 2015. Item three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of February 28th, 2015. Item five, approve an agreement with Environmental Science Associates, or ESA, for a supplemental environmental impact report for the proposed Audi dealership. Item six, approve an agreement with Kaiser Marston Associates Incorporated for a fiscal impact analysis for the proposed all-terror specific plan. Seven, approve the First Amendment to the agreement with Eskil Corporation for Plan Check Services for Fiscal Year 2014-15. Eight, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with California Watershed Engineering Corporation for the flood control channel reconstruction and repair of Palo Community Park, project number PW 11-10. And item nine is adopt ordinance number 15-03, amending the section 8.12.140 of the Temecula Municipal Code concerning the recovery of abatement expenses in public nuisance actions, and this is the second reading as required of that ordinance.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Edwards, a second by Mr. Niggar. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries unanimously four, zero, and one vacancy. You don't get to say that very often.
No.
Okay, hopefully, that won't last too long, either. At this time, we're going to recess the city council meeting and adjourn to the Temecula Community Services District meeting chaired by President Mary Ann Edwards.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order and let the record reflect that we have four present and one vacancy. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
No public comments? All right, so moving on to CSD Consent Calendar. All matters listed in a consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 10, approve the action minutes of March 24th, 2015. Item number 11, approve an agreement with the Margarita Officials Association for Sports Officiating Services. Item number 12, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with Sherry Berry Music for concession services. And item number 13, approval to utilize staff support for West Coast premiere screening event for film featuring retired USMC Corporal Juan E. Dominguez in Temecula at the request of TCSD president, yours truly, Edwards.
Move consent calendar.
And--
Second.
Motion and a second. Who is the second? There you go.
Got it.
And there we go. That is four and one vacancy. Anything else, Mr. City Manager or Directors?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
No, nothing? Then I will move, take a motion for adjournment.
Well, I think our community services director always has something to say.
Kevin, you need to pound-- I never look to the left down there. You need to pound the table. Make some noise.
Me, 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 me. Make some noise. Just one minor thing. Quick slide. Think?
Oh, yes.
This is the first event that I attended as community services director, and it just holds a special place in my heart. This is the first time I heard about the candor spirit here in Temecula, and it really is true here. Really inspiring. So on Saturday, April 25th, please join us at Great Oak High School for the Seventh Annual Special Games. This event is open to developmentally disabled athletes of all ages and abilities. Athletes will participate in opening ceremonies, non-competitive games, sporting events, sponsor lunch, and closing ceremonies. So for those who are interested in participating, you can submit an application online or call us at 694-6480 for more information.
Mr. Comerchero.
Quick question, Kevin. Do you know why the city of Temecula puts on events like that?
Well--
Because we're awesome?
No, no, no. No, no.
I know there's some backstory-- Mike knows.
Because we care.
No?
Why?
Because we have hearts.
Temecula has heart.
We have hearts.
Oh, that's what I-- Oh. That's what I meant. That's right.
You saw that, huh?
Yeah.
Quick question.
Yep.
You know, to you young people out there, you know, there's a lot of young folks who volunteer at the Special Games, and it'll change your whole perspective on everything if you come on out there and just either volunteer or just help. It's an amazing event, so if you get a chance to come on out that Saturday, it'll change your life.
And you took the words right out of my mouth. If you want to do something and feel about the best you've ever felt when you're finished, that's the event to come to. And any members of the people watching at home or members of the audience, if you want to come out and see just a fantastic program, come out that day, April 25th, 9:30, Great Oak High School. All right, anything else? Sorry, Mr. Hawkins.
Madam President, I was just going to add that usually the participants, it ranges from 50 to almost 100 participants, but our volunteers range from anywhere from maybe 200 to 250. So folks definitely come out, and they are blessed for coming out and participating.
That's because it's a feel-good day for everybody, so we encourage you to come out and participate. Okay.
Move adjournment.
And a motion.
Second.
And a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And there we go. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
We will reconvene at Temecula City Council. Item 14 is a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the-- issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 14 is approval of a substantial amendment to the Fiscal Year 2012-13, Fiscal Year 13-14, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plans, and the Fiscal Year 2015-16, CDBG Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations. And, Mrs. Edwards, I believe you need to recuse yourself.
I do thank you because of my association with the Boys and Girls Club. As the former CEO, I will be leaving the desk for this item, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. You got three of us love. Could be worth.
Good evening.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, each year, the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development provides local jurisdictions with community development block grant funds. Local jurisdictions allocate these funds to public service programs and capital improvement projects that help to create decent housing, establish suitable living environments, and expand economic opportunities in our community. All activities funded with CDBG must meet one of the CDBG regulation objectives: benefit low-moderate-income persons, prevent blighted areas, or address a community emergency or urgent need. Any activities funded must also be identified in the city's approved five-year consolidated plan, which identifies the city's high-priority needs and objectives and the strategies to achieve those objectives. The consolidated plan identifies the following: community priorities for allocating CDBG funds annually. It assists in the preservation and development of affordable housing. It helps to, or we allocate funds to improve or expand infrastructure and facilities. It provides for needed public services in the community and also addresses economic development needs. In addition to the consolidated plan, the city is required to develop a one-year action plan that notifies citizens, stakeholders, and HUD of the city's intentions during the fiscal year. The action plan, it gathers public input and it summarizes the city's, or the CDBG program's, highest project priorities and services to be funded in order to meet the greatest measurable impact on the community for that program, and it serves as the formal annual funding application for HUD. The annual action plan is always developed with a strong emphasis on community engagement. The city provides opportunity for resident and stakeholder input by advertising and facilitating a number of public meetings and workshops throughout the year, and we also provide for a 30-day public review and comment period on the draft plan prior to the public hearing tonight. The city's estimated allocation for fiscal year 2015-16 is $540,000-214,000. Additionally, the city has a remaining balance of $160,561,000 of unspent funds that were allocated to projects in previous fiscal years. This remaining balance should be redirected to various projects and programs during the next fiscal year in order to comply with CDBG program regulations requiring the timely expenditure of funds and performance reporting. The projects funded in the previous fiscal year encountered implementation challenges. HUD has commented and suggested that the city take action to reallocate this money to projects that can be implemented quickly in order to expend the funds in compliance with the program requirements. In order to reallocate these funds, the city must process what's called a substantial amendment. The redirecting of unspent funds constitutes the process of a substantial, or the processing of a substantial amendment when a project budget will increase by 25%. The scope of the activity significantly changes, or a project is canceled and funds are redirected to another priority project already listed in the five-year plan. Substantial amendment process is required per the regulations in order to give the public an opportunity to comment on the redirect of the unused funds independently of the annual allocation that is under the annual action plan. So, the annual development of all these plans and the administration of the CDBG program require an extensive coordination process, both internally and externally, with stakeholders over several months. After thorough review and analysis of program performance, priorities, and goals, revenues, and expenditures, applications, and public outreach by staff, the Finance Subcommittee met on January 27th to consider the, a comprehensive annual 2015-16 funding plan for the program. Subsequent to the Finance Subcommittee meeting, staff received the formal annual award letter from HUD on February 18th, and the award letter stated that the annual allocation this year would be approximately $3,800 less than the Subcommittee had considered back in January, and staff adjusted for the difference by evenly reducing all the projects and services So, for the program objectives, to meet program objectives and to best address the highest needs of the community, the Subcommittee's recommended a maximum of 15% of the annual allocation be allocated to 10 public service programs. 65% will be allocated to one capital improvement program and 20% to public, or to program administration. The substantial amendment, or the redirect, of the $160,000 will be allocated to one capital improvement project and two capital housing activities. This is a detail of all the programs and projects that will be funded for the total of $775,000 next fiscal year. Approx, or, I'm sorry, nine public service programs will receive approximately $7,800. $10,000 is allocated to Fair Housing Services. $351,000, $351,140,000 is allocated to the One Capital Project to improve two segments of sidewalk in the Old Town area. And for the redirect, $122,000 is allocated to the Sam Hicks Playground Enhancement Project, $12,000 for Solar Affordable Home Program, and $26,223 to the Home Maintenance and Repair Program administered by Habitat for Humanity. The remainder is for program administration. Staff is recommending adoption of a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the Fiscal Years 2012, 2013, and 2013-14 CDBG Annual Action Plans, and the adoption of a resolution approving the Fiscal Year 2015, 2016 Annual Action Plans and the proposed use of funds. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions at this time? Seeing none, then we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any requests to speak, and for the record, the city clerk's office did not receive any written correspondence in regards to this item.
Thank you. Then we will close the public hearing and go into council discussion. Mr. Nigar.
Move the item, please.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ron. Please cast your votes. Just for clarification, is that motion for both 14-1 and 14-2?
Yes.
Okay. Got that, Randy?
Yes.
Okay. And that motion does carry 3, 0, with Mrs. Edwards abstaining and, well, not abstaining, but recusing herself, and 1 seat vacant. Mrs. Edwards can come back now if she's still here. If not, we'll just move on without her. Okay, well, while she's coming, we'll just kind of keep things moving. Under Council Business, item 15 on the agenda, there she is, is consideration of approval of CRNR Residential Organics Recycling Program. I've got everybody walking up to the front here. We're going to get a strong presentation, and for all of you here, this is the last item on the agenda, but hang around because this is a very interesting project, and I think we all could benefit from hearing more about it. So with that, Dale, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Comaturo, and members of the city council. Give me just one second to get to the presentation here. There we go.
I wish you would be here.
Okay. It has been, excuse me, it's been quite some time since the city or council has had to address any solid waste recycling issues, but recent legislation and issues locally have required us to do just that. We have representatives from CRNR here today that I'm going to ask to come up to discuss further about the program and provide some additional information, but for now, I'm going to go into a little bit of background and talk a little bit about the legislative issues. So, the city first entered into an exclusive franchise agreement with CRNR back in 1991 in its early cityhood for trash and recycling services for residential and commercial businesses. We were the first city, or were one of the first cities in California to adopt a three-card system, one for trash, one for recyclables, and then one for green waste. It's been a successful program that has enabled us to stay above our diversion mandates that the state has set. Talking about the legislative items, AB 939 was the first one that started back in 1989, which basically set the mandate for cities to divert 50% of their waste by 2000, the year 2000. We have successfully done that since that mandate was put in place with the recycling programs that we have implemented. Subsequent legislation has targeted the waste sector, AB 32, targeted the waste sector as a primary sector contributing to greenhouse gas emissions. As a result of that legislation, there has been additional legislation that has targeted organic waste. And the reason why the state is targeting organic waste is, one, because it's a simple waste stream to target and divert, and the other is because of the methane gas that is released at landfills. There's another local issue that's taking place in Riverside County, Waste Management, and the local task force has been addressing, and that's the land application of non-compost organics in agricultural, on agricultural land. And the reason why they're addressing this is because of the potential of pest and disease transmission that could devastate and affect agricultural crops. The reason why all of these legislations and issues are important right now and what's why we're here today is because we need to start looking at additional ways and additional recycling programs to still maintain that 50% diversion mandate by the state. One thing that I didn't mention in the previous legislative item is that they raised that goal to 75%, and that's why they're adopting these legislation, legislative items in order to target that waste stream. We currently, our residential green waste stream is, 20% of it is used as what's called alternative daily cover. That's currently considered diversion by the state. New legislation is going to take that away, and any green waste that's used as alternative daily cover becomes landfill, and it doesn't count toward diversion. The other 80% of our green waste is used for the non-composted application, land application in ag lands. Again, the county's looking at raising the standards for that because of the contamination issue and potential for disease and pest transmission, or banning its application in its entirety. In either case, we're looking at, we're meeting our 50% mandate now, but if we don't adopt a new program to address the end product or the processing of this, we're going to drop below that 50%. The implication of that is that we are then subject to $10,000 per day fine from the state. So, that's why we're here today. I'm going to ask David Ferrian from CRNR to come up and give a little bit more background on what's happening in the industry and the program itself. Thank you.
Mr. Ferrian? Good evening. It's been a while since we've seen you in this chamber. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, David Ferrian with CRNR. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak a little bit about this new program, and I'm going to spend a couple minutes talking about a little bit of the summary, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mike Silva, our Civil Engineer and Project Manager, and he'll talk a little bit about the project itself and what it's going to do. As Mr. West said, some of the background relative to why we're looking at this today is really, there's a lack of infrastructure in Riverside County to handle our organic waste stream, and that's primarily the green waste that comes from our grass clippings and tree trimmings, and soon will be food waste as well because some of the new legislation is going to address food waste. So, really, today, there's really only three permitted compost facilities in all of Riverside County, which from a capacity standpoint, do not have the ability to absorb the amount of material that's basically in the marketplace, so that's why we're looking to build a facility like we're talking about. Legislative changes, AB 1594, Dale touched on that, that's going to phase out the use of ADC. Can still go, the landfill is ADC, but no longer will count as diversion. And AB 1826, which is the bigger bill, which is addressing organics at the source, primarily food waste and large generation, generators of green waste, again, that will no longer be able to go to the landfill as well, so we have to find an alternative program to deal with that. And really, that's the greenhouse gas emissions. It's really what they're trying to address there. ADC and land application, as I say, those are going to be phased out. The big issue with land application today, that's typically where we take our green material, we clean it, grind it, and they use it for erosion control, water retention, and so on. There's some, there's some pests now that have infiltrated that, and that's being passed on to some of the orchards and so on, whether it be avocados or citrus. So, the agriculture industry is very concerned about that. That's going to ultimately potentially wipe out some of the crops, so therefore, the county currently is looking at a ban on land application, and those today are the two ways that we get rid of the green waste that we collect from the residents and businesses. One of the things that companies really prided itself on in coming with our time with Temecula is bringing solutions to the table, trying to bring them in advance, and it really goes back as early on as our three-card system, where really, that was very innovative at the time. The first city to implement such a program has diverted 50% since day one, so really, the project we're bringing today, we think, is kind of that same thing. It's on the cutting edge, absolutely. I think in 10 years from now, 5 years from now, they'll be all over the state, and that's the way people will handle the organics, and I'll let Mike talk more in-depth about that. Some of the benefits to early implementation, some of the things we've done as a company, we've secured over $5 million in grants towards the construction of the facility. Those dollars have been taken right off the capital cost of the project. We're going to be able to produce our own renewable natural gas, which we think is really exciting. We're going to actually take the grass clippings from the curb and the food waste, put it through our digester system, and produce natural gas to power our fleet. So, the fleet here in Temecula will be actually powered by the grass from the curb. We think it's the least expensive long-term solution. Yes, it's more expensive, but we think over a long period of time, it's going to definitely provide the most cost-effective solution. It's going to meet or exceed all of the air quality standards that are out there today. We have documentation of that that we've presented previously in some meetings, so that's another thing. Maintain compliance with the recycling legislation, as Dale talked about, meeting those goals, soon to be 75%, as well as meeting the new legislation and making sure that the organics do not get into the landfill. And then I guess the final thing, and I'll turn it over to Mike to run through the actual project, a couple of quick slides. Energy independence, again, we hear a lot, that's a big buzzword. We hear a lot of people talking about that. Well, truly, Temecula would be doing that. We'd be taking grass and turning it into gas. That really is what we would be doing, along with our food waste. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike and let him talk a little bit about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, okay. Good evening. I'm Mike Silva, CRNR. I'm the civil engineer on the project. That's a rendering of it. We're doing a regional facility, so right now, we're building Phase 1. We're about 75% completed. Most people have taken a tour of that or in this room, and a lot of our other cities have done that as well. When we're all done, we'd like to have four phases, and so the 335,000 tons represents all the organics for Riverside and San Bernardino and Orange County all put together. When that's done, that'll be converted into 260,000 tons of fertilizer and 4 million gallons of natural gas. We'll use about 2 million ourselves, the other 2 million will put into the pipeline and wheel throughout the state of California. and wheel throughout the state of California. That's our team. Iseman is a German company. Green Lane is actually out of New Zealand, and WM Lyles is actually based right here in Temecula, large sewer contractor, they're building the facility for us, and my engineering firm is out of Brea, J.R. Miller. So as you see today, you have the three carts on the bottom. The only change that we're doing is the cart on the left, which is now green waste, will just be renamed organics, so you can put your food waste right in with your grass clippings, and that'll go to Temecula, excuse me, go up to our Paris facility. The four products on the right is what comes out of that system, a little bit of residual, the recyclables. The renewable natural gas will actually be used right on our facility. We already have a C and G facility there, and then the back end will be fertilizer, which is the same stuff that's at Home Depot and Lowe's right now that's in the bags, same exact material. Won't go into detail on this, but that shows our digester, and basically, it's a replication of what a cow does. A cow's got four stomachs, it eats hay, out the back end comes methane and fertilizer, that's exactly what we do. But we're commercializing it and expediting the process. That's a full-blown artist rendering of it, so again, you see the digesters in the front, which are the square, the round domes, that's our post-digester with our gas storage. The gas is actually cleaned up on-site. We can also take liquid waste, so we can take fats, oils, and grease, stuff from KFC, McDonald's, places like that, so we can take any organic waste that's available to us. And that's the roadshow.
Okay, if we can have that slide back up, there we go. As I understand, the facility won't be completed until late December, so if the program is adopted, it would commence January 1, 2016. Since the program begins mid-fiscal year, additional rate that's being proposed for this for 2015, '16 would be ninety-seven and a half cents for the first year, the second year before full implementation would be a dollar ninety-five. Some of the public outreach we've done, back in December, we put together an article and distributed, or published it in our city newsletter. In that article, we talked about the program, the AD facility, and why we think this is necessary for the city. We also asked the residents to please give us some feedback on it. We received three, or I'm sorry, five comments, all supporting it, but just some questions about how will this work, how do we, you know, will there be a container provided for in-house use? We did not receive any opposition to the program. And we do know that additional public education will be needed if this is adopted and implemented. This was discussed by the City Sustainability Committee, which is comprised of two council members and a member from each one of the city's commission. On March 30th, they discussed this and provided comments about it, wanting to know if compost can be provided to residents and used at city parks free of charge. First right of refusal option for renewable natural gas to be used in city vehicle fleet. The secondary or co-environmental benefits, that was touched on in terms of air quality, the energy independence, and then the importance of developing a very strong public education The recommendations before you tonight are to approve the proposed Residential Organics Recycling Program as presented, direct staff to incorporate the proposed rate of the Residential Organics Recycling Program into the solid waste and recycling rates and charges, which is the Exhibit D of the franchise agreement, and then to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the franchise agreement to reflect the proposed program and recent legislation affecting solid waste disposal and recycling mandates. And that concludes my staff report, available for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Dale, and team. We do have a couple of questions. Dr. Ron, your first question.
I don't have any questions, really. I mean, we've sort of, do you have a comment? We'll do that later.
Mary Ann, do you have a question?
I do have a question. Can we go back, next to the last slide, where interested residents asked questions? Can we answer those questions for public consumption right now? Will the fertilizer and the compost be utilized free of charge in Temecula parks? And then there were three other ones after that.
That's up on the screen right now, yeah. The first right of refusal for renewable, is this what you're referring to?
Yes.
The slide? Yes. Yeah, we could invite CRNR up here again and discuss that.
David, you want to come on up and?
As long as interested residents ask the question, you know.
Sure, Councilmember Edwards, yeah. During our discussion, there are going to be some benefits given back to the city. One of the discussions was that during our community cleanup events, we're going to make compost available to the residents, so as they bring in their items to dispose of those, they can take compost with them. In addition to, we're going to make that available to the park system and/or your landscape maintenance people for use there. As Mike mentioned, we will produce additional natural gas at some point when more of our phases come online, and the city in an interest in potentially making that available to their fleet, which we will do that as well. So yes, all the items that are actually on that list, we will make available.
Good answer.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Councilwoman Edwards, those were questions that were posed in the subcommittee meeting, not from the residents.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Yes, they were good questions.
I have, David, maybe you ought to come back up and just a quick one. We know from the staff report that the impact financially to the citizens will be a dollar ninety-five per month for the full year, starting when the full year commences next The impression I get from reading through all the material and talking to our own staff is that we're attempting to be proactive here, and that if we don't do this now, the solutions that we'll need to implement based on the newer legislation will far exceed that in terms of cost. I just want to ask you if that's your objective, if that's your understanding, and indeed, are we spending a little bit now to save a whole lot more later?
Yes, it is. I think that, you know, being proactive in this regard is, we're going to have a certain amount of capacity available, and we would, you know, obviously, our cities, as Temecula is one of those, we want to approach them first about being a part of this program. As more, as we get closer to the phasing of those laws, the infrastructure today really won't satisfy the material that's being collected if it was, if all of a sudden land application was to go away or ADC. So I would say, yes, I think that it's definitely going to be more expensive as we get further out. Again, some of the benefits that I mentioned quickly in my presentation was many of the grants we've gotten. I don't know that those would be available for the next phase or a phase after that, so I would say, yeah, I definitely think, you know, starting early will be a benefit to the city, similar to what we did with the three-cart system back in 1992.
And just one other question involving the costs, again, over the years, and CRNR has been our provider for a good many years now, and it's been a wonderful relationship. And one of the things that collectively we've all done very well is holding those costs down. This dollar ninety-five a month additionally, where do you see that in the future? Do you see that you'll be able to hold that for a number of years, or do you see those costs escalating more quickly than later?
No, I think we, similar to the way our rates have increased over the period that we've been here, only by cost of living, and in fact, we had three years where we didn't increase the residential rates at all. And so that fee will be adjusted identical to the way our fees are today, and that would only be by cost of living. So we're basically locking that fee in today, and if next year, there was a negative cost of living, basically, that fee would actually go down. So that would be the way that fee would adjust going forward.
Good. Thank you, David. Thank you, team. Any other questions?
Nope.
Is that it? Okay, and discussion, let's hear from Matt first, since he was up here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good question. Any public comments on this issue? Okay, Matt?
Okay, good. Well, you know, I appreciate the presentations, and I wanted to start by saying I appreciate the city staff and the subcommittee time that I'm on reviewing this, the tours of the facilities and so forth. And I also appreciate the patience that you guys had with me, because, you know, of course, I've had some experience working with Environmental Services Department in the city of San Diego years ago, and my background being in, you know, environmental sciences, have spent quite a bit of time in the waste industry as well. So at least from a technical side, this was a really, I think, an interesting project for me to look at. From, you know, sort of a regional standpoint, I think we're recognizing, and this is why AB-939 came about in the first place, and why the regulations are increasing, you know, dramatically over time, is because landfill space is at a premium, and siding a landfill within our region is a significant burden, and so this helps reduce that burden significantly. And, you know, the improvements, you know, sort of regionally from doing something like this include things like our own air quality within the city of Temecula as well, you know, switching over vehicles to RNG versus, you know, other traditional fuels is certainly a benefit for us. You know, the things I heard throughout the meetings and discussion were, you know, pay now or pay more later, because, you know, it's only getting more challenging and more difficult to deal with waste issues in the state of California. And, you know, of course, I teach students in environmental sciences, and I tell them if, and for those students in the audience who are interested in the field, I always say, you know, the three emerging or most rapidly growing areas that we see are in water, energy, and waste. And that's, you know, a significant responsibility that we have. And so to see a project like this come forward, I was quite candidly surprised, because I know CRNR has a reputation for bringing forward progressive things, and they have in the past in our region, but this project, as far as I understand it, is sort of nationally and potentially even globally, one of the premier projects of its kind. So for the city of Temecula to participate in really the ground floor of something like this, I think, says a lot about the city, but also about the quality of the companies that we have working with us to help with these issues. Finally, I'll end up with, you know, the concepts that we talked about, the city fleet vehicles and so forth, and I appreciate you guys allowing us the opportunity to have, you know, access to that if the city chooses to do that into the future. And so, you know, from my perspective, and in the, I think the words of Bob Wolf, it was, you know, pay now or pay a lot more later. And so, you know, from my perspective, this is a benefit to our region, and ideally, one day, hopefully, we'll get around, you know, a lot of our waste issues, but in the interim, I think this is a really good solution. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt. Mary Ann?
Thank you. Dr. Ron spoke to the environmental and the science side, and I would like to speak to the CRNR side. They have been a fabulous community partner with the city of Temecula for years and years, in fact, as long as I can remember. And, you know, now that I'm thirty-five, I still have a good memory, so. CRNR's been wonderful, and they have been on the forefront in a number of areas with their RNG trucks and a lot of the processes that they do now. So we also know CRNR to be the kind of company that they do what they say they're going to do. And so it's really great to see them, again, trailblazing in an area that's going to impact not only our region, but it is, as Dr. Ron said, it's a national concern. So being, Temecula has always been proactive and visionary, and I see CRNR in the very same vein, proactive and visionary, so it's wonderful to be able to support a project like this, and I still need a tour.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Mike?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I've been, I think I saw this presentation five times. They presented it to me as a council member, then I saw it with my colleague, Mr. Ron, then they come to RCTC, then they come to WRCOG, and then I'm here seeing it here tonight. You guys have certainly made the rounds, and you've done a good job, and you've made cogent arguments. Actually, my comment is more for our staff now, is we start to proceed with our development projects and things that come under sequo, and we do our greenhouse gas analysis and things of that nature, what we're now doing as a city by implementing this program definitely affects the requirements that we have under greenhouse gas emissions and mitigation measures in our EIRs. In fact, I know we're about to launch into a couple of them now, and so we need to take that into account, that that's one more measure that we're complying with state regulations that cities who are not complying or are not part of this program don't get to take advantage of. And it's interesting, I was dealing with a colleague who's doing a project out in the desert next to a composting facility, next to a residential subdivision, and now that he heard about what you folks are doing, it's now becoming an alternative in his EIR. It's, hey, you guys need to be doing what CRNR is doing, that way you don't have the smell, and you don't have all the, you know, all the, I guess, the environmental impacts that you guys are eliminated by doing this. So, well done. And I'll move the item.
Thank you, Mike. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Matt.
Whoever wants to second, hit the button.
Go ahead. Let the new guy do it.
All right.
Come on, give me this one.
Before we vote, I just want to echo most of the comments that my colleagues have provided. I don't know, David, have you been providing services since the very beginning?
Yeah.
I thought so. A few years before I came on board, and it really has been a wonderful relationship. They've provided an outstanding level of service at a, more than just a very competitive price, a very, very strong price in the marketplace, and so our citizens benefit from that, and this seems to be an extension of that. It's innovative. One thing we always like to be in Temecula is on the forefront of innovation, and CRNR is allowing us to do that. So thank you for that, and with that, let's take a vote. That motion does carry unanimously, four-zero. Well done, team. It's a good project. Appreciate it.
Yay!
Okay, that completes our agenda. Do we have a city manager's report? Mr. Adams?
I'll just mention one thing, the gentleman, I don't know if he's still here, that spoke earlier, the Dial Collective, that particular establishment does not reside in the city of Temecula, it's actually in the city of Marietta, and we'd like to reach out to him if he has his contact information. We can follow up with you on some other programs that do exist here in the city of Temecula that we'd like to talk to you about, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do we have a city attorney's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Now you can move adjournment.
Now I can move for the third time. Adjournment, please.
Second.
And the second, anybody object?
Nope.
Saying none, we stand adjourned.
He's so aggressive with that.
Thank you, everybody.
Did you notice? Oh, my goodness.